A little bit out of order than usual, but what we're going to do first is go over the public live streaming policy that I passed out to folks, I sent it out last week. So I guess you like it. So I'm going to ask if, back to me. A little bit about it, just in case. I tested it this morning. My wife says from there to there, it's pretty good, but I don't know what the mask.
Don't turn people on. Town of Consville streaming and recording policies are public meetings. The purpose of this policy is to identify a process with those citizens who wish to livestream or record Consville Town Hall. The intent is to reduce or eliminate misunderstandings and have a clear understanding of what is expected of the town and of those who wish to livestream or record town hall meetings. There are two wifi routers at Consville Town Hall. One is exclusively reserved for town business. The other router is public wifi currently known as Consville New York. The town will make the Consville, New York router available to those persons wishing to livestream meetings. In the event there is insufficient bandwidth to maintain two simultaneous livestreams, any livestream conducted by the town will take precedent if the town is doing the livestream. If there is insufficient bandwidth for three livestreams, the town will decide which party will conduct the second livestream with the intent of sharing the opportunity equally among the public. The town will place its streaming and recording devices and equipment in a location that seems the most optimal for those viewing the meeting. Other parties streaming and or recording meetings may place their devices and equipment in the meeting room so that it does not interfere with or disrupt the meeting or the town's streaming or recording. For security reasons and to protect the town's IT assets from being breached, the town will not allow, under any circumstance, non-town-owned equipment to be physically attached to or connected to the town router asset unless specifically authorized by the town board. Further, members of the public will not be permitted to permitted access to the room containing the routers and other town-owned IT equipment unless authorized by the town board. Non-town-owned equipment must be removed from town hall after each meeting. In the event of an executive session by the town board or a caucus by a town board member of the same political party, streaming and or recording will be suspended while the executive session or caucus is being conducted. All equipment used for streaming and recording will be disconnected and removed from the building. When the executive session or caucus is concluded and the board meeting returns to its regular open meeting process, the wishing time is given for the purpose of reconnecting the equipment and to resume livestreaming and recording. The person conducting a livestream or recording has the same privilege of the floor as the caller. Outside of exercising privilege of the floor granted under the Town of Consville privilege of the floor policy, the operator of the live streaming or recording equipment will not narrate or otherwise make comments during the meeting. The town board may, from time to time, revise this policy by majority vote of the board. The town clerk will post notices in town hall that this process of streaming and recording by the Consville Town Board meeting is available on request and will also be made available at meetings.
Thank you. You have some members of the board, suggestions, motions? You have a motion? Oh, we got a second from Kelly. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? So carry. Okay, now we're going to privilege to the floor. I know Fred, you asked previously, that's, you'll be the first one up. I understand there's several others too, but we'll start with Fred. Our policy is three to five minutes, we'll go at five. That's all right?
I was just wanting to get y'all, you guys all received this in your mailbox this weekend. And I wanted to let you know we'll be doing regular newsletter type things in order to bring the community together. So if the town has any information they want to provide us so that we can include it on from newsletters, from events that sort of that sort that we could utilize to help bring people together, help develop community. We feel that having newsletters with information on the back, like you see, people just sit on their cabinet inside is really helpful. People have already commented how they've already stuck it on the fridge, so that's positive, but it's one way you know that the first one is you got a belt sock is out and now we'll keep putting it. I wanted to let you know, so I have any information if you want to be included in our newsletters.
Thank you, Fred. Who's next, Carrie?
I mean, I just wanted to thank the town highway department this last storm. It was a bit crazy. I know you're short-staffed as much as everywhere else is short-staffed at this time, but thank you for keeping the roses as good as they could be with all the ice and the snow.
That was a real challenge, wasn't it? I complimented you. Thank you. The guys are, work pretty hard these last, yes. Still solid ice and there's still white in the ice. Yeah, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the nice.
I also had one more thing. In regard to the newsletter that is being published, I wanted to know what the, if the town has any authority over the fact that it says Town of Consville, but it's not identifying who the publisher is. So I had many contacts and questions this weekend as to, oh, you guys put out a new flyer. And I said, well, I haven't seen it.
No, unfortunately, and I would like to have seen some acknowledgement of who the publisher is, something to that effect. Because I did get a number of calls, people asking me if it was ours, meaning the town's, or some kind of statement that would say not affiliated with the town.
It's called the Consville Corner. It says that it's a newsletter. It's kind of outlined that it's not to do with the town. And I don't think that we have to disdain on a newsletter that has nothing to do with the town. It's a goodwill effort. Thank you would be better than, you know, why did you say that?
It's hard to thank somebody if you don't know who put it out.
Well, if the newsletter says Consville NY, if you go on Consville NY, you will see all the information about it. That was the point. Just to bring people together to see the new website so that people can see the new presence on the web, what we have to offer in the town, and the newsletter helps allow things like Andrew to sit through directory. If you look at the newsletter, which if you haven't, it has it here, but the newsletter directs you to all the places to look, which would tell you where it was created. It's the one that you would be creating the newsletter.
Does it, does it have a link to this Town of Consville webpage that's on the St. Harry's Town Hall?
No, there's their county website of a link to our website.
No, to your website?
Yeah, to the, to the Consville website that we have.
I didn't know you said "our" was part of your.
Our as in Conville, the website for the Town of Consville.
Is it approved by the town?
A website doesn't have to be approved.
No, I'm saying your paper, is it being approved, like?
Doesn't have to be.
So you could just?
The Mount Eagle newspaper goes out to everyone there, it's to Harry News.
Right, but we know who, but we know who publishes that. Somewhere, if you want credit for the newsletter, then you should have your name or something linked to it. I have several phone calls this weekend from people asking me who's publishing the newsletter. And I can give them any information because I knew it didn't come from the town.
Well, all they had to do was read the newsletter and they would know where it came from.
All right, we're going circles here. I just think that this is a continuation of the other website and so much, so much means that I think you do if you had said publisher Fred Rock. Nothing wrong.
It's not only Fred Rock. Multiple people work on it. I don't do everything at home. This is a gesture of goodwill for the town. I don't understand how anyone could argue that there's anything in this newsletter that's confrontational, negative, disparaging. It's a totally uplifting, positive piece for the town, so whether you guys like it or not, the Consville Corner will be published on a regular basis.
You have that right to do it, but.
That's right.
Right, but give credit to the people that are participating in it. We're a small community and like to know who gets involved in different things.
All I want to say is, let's not beat this to death. All I want to say is it comes across, not just, but it comes across to a lot of people in town that it's disingenuous when you present it that way. I'm just telling you the facts.
Disingenuous, there's absolutely nothing about this that looks like the Town of Conville. We have our own logo, our own fonts, our own look. It's called the Conville.
Very nice. What's next, Carrie?
What more do you need?
Ryan?
I was just basically on the same boat, you know, with the news newsletter that, you know, we like to know who's writing the information, you know, and if it's information about the town, I feel like the town should be kind of approving the information. That's all.
Who else?
Lance? All I gotta say, if I get enough junk mail, I don't want to see any more of these in my mailbox.
It's quite all right.
I don't want to see any more.
Well, you don't, by all means, you can send us a thing, did not have something come to your door. I don't know who you are.
I'm sending it to you right now. My name is Lance Spencer. I'm telling you right now, I don't want to see any more of my mailbox.
That's quite all right. You know, the post office puts them in every mailbox.
Well, you better not, I don't want it in my mailbox.
So, well, that's quite all right.
Anybody else? Let's proceed. We have minutes in front of us, quite a few of them, because we have the year-end meeting, we have the organizational meeting, special meetings. So you have one, two, three, four sets of meetings. December 27th, January 3rd, January 10th, and the 25th of January. You have to tell a military person once you did 25th of January 2020. Truth is, I like that better because people don't appreciate it. So if there's any you want to do separately or you want to do them en masse, that's entirely up to you guys, but, or reject them. Please don't do that.
I'm gonna do them all.
Okay. I guess that was a, motions were approved and I'll get the second one. We have a second from Bob. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? So carry. We have everyone from Marie, who's session?
Dear Town Board members, I am into the exemption renewal season and have had very few agricultural exemptions returned so far. I am seeing that is because I am requiring leases for the rental land that are bringing, or that are farmed or updated. I have to receive renewals back by March 1st if I don't have a lease to the farmer for those who are running farms, or those who are living farmers with their land. I will not be able to renew the agricultural exemptions for this year per the guidelines this state has set. I have renewed the partial, or partial exemption for the resolution that the town approved. Most of all, the forest exemptions have been returned. Usually in March or April, the state will post a new rule list for the seniors are exempted so we can update that system. It has come to my attention that the bills for mailing the exemptions through the town clerk mailroom still need to be addressed. I had provided it last month, but I'm providing it properly again this month. I have received a yearly list of client sales for Conville. There were thirty-eight sales. These are the sales that were looked at for considering dilution in the town. One of the higher sales was double the hundred percent current address dilution. Twenty twenty-three dilution updates of the town is coming up and our state liaison has mentioned that it is suggested the town's approval, the town's approval resolution that supports the update to be concluded for the twenty twenty-three goal. The work on that will be done in twenty twenty-two for the twenty twenty-three goal and will use the past three years' sales to determine what changes we need to make. When the weather gets to where it isn't frigid all the time, I will be out reviewing the past three years' armband field data to use the information for the update. I do support a resolution for this. The town should also take advantage of the PATA collection that we think is a data collection that will become available to everyone who is granted to the town and the city. I have come across our county real property system, the couple of parcels so far that need information and the photos do not coincide with it.
Thank you. She's referencing the grant that the county received, over six hundred thousand dollars. You have data collectors, people who will not do assessments, who will make sure that these properties are described correctly. This way, we're all on the same page. Ultimately, some might, some people would like to use it for a way to get to one hundred percent like we are in Coles who always involve in some places, but at the very least this is probably going to be four people working for four years to make that happen. Big, big job. The assessors have been pushing for this for a long time and we just got the grant because of that one. We need a motion to accept the assessor's report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So carry. Code enforcement, code enforcement officers report. First one person.
First one person. Yes, I guess first thing I'd like to just say hello of the board. Everybody's here. Rich Erwin, who's maybe taking up midroom interim position of code enforcement here in Conville. There's a couple of things I'll go over. I started doing so far and do plan and continue, but that comes with that. I've been setting up at home, a little office space, open space in my home office to take care of the kind of Convilles CEO responsibility. Basically, instead of having to drive over Matt Jefferson, instead of having to drive over for a file or a piece of paper or something, I'm trying to work at home. I'm in charge of the time. I'll be in town typically on Wednesdays for a couple hours in the morning without a very, I mean, especially. I've been familiarizing myself, the kind of Convilles practices and teachers, just trying to get things straight. It's all different than Houston-Jefferson, so it just takes a little bit of time. I was given, Pasio gave me a very large, well-kept bunch of files, file boxes, all the files, I've been going through them. And I've been separating them out into a couple different categories. Current opening permits, the holders expired, the incomplete and the complete. And I've come across currently, we have thirty-one open permits, eight expired permits, and I've mailed out notifications, so I'll get on board and be renewed. Fourteen incomplete folders, which means they're older than a year old and they need something. There hasn't been inspections, there's no CC or no CC CEO issue. And I'll follow up with them, same thing, kind of as the weather opens up and I can get out on people's properties and meet with them. But that might take a while, but it's going to be a while. So I've been coming down through the town, going through the files and filing some paperwork. I'm in the middle of, I just actually had a couple of questions that Phil helped me out with as far as filing the near state required annual codes report. I'm about to report and done that. I think I should have done that in one day. And then I made, I had contact, I made contact with EPC concerning town's flood insurance program. And I need to have a meeting call with EPC. I'm not really quite sure what that is, but we hope we can, you know, you guys. No, I think I had to do it about five years ago. Okay, so they can check the box, so we're still eligible for some kind of flooding there or something. Yeah, so I'll report back once I take care of that. So since I started, I've done, completed one certificate of occupancy, one certificate of compliance. I've been on two building pro inspections and just taken a bunch of calls and emails basically concerning open works. Thank you.
Home bill different than Jefferson?
This day.
Yeah. Okay. All my motion. Also, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie, return it there.
So for this one, we had five dog license renewals and one building permit, building permit renewal that was filed.
Cold weather, I think people came.
Yeah.
But we still have to make a motion to approve the report. We have a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Yeah.
Hope it's not slowing her world.
We got it on. There are fifteen hundred, I'm sorry, one thousand three hundred and thirty-one total tax built in the town. Two hundred and ninety-eight monthly. That collected one million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars in net.
Now you're starting to get the late ones.
Yeah.
All in favor?
How many motions?
All, the motion, it's like all in favor, I'll say it. Store district operators report. Don't read all the numbers, it's just numbers. Let's not, let's do the beginning and the end. Let's want to, okay, read that. Sometimes they give you the daily sewage flow and I'm serious.
That's the first.
Actually, it is very, it is very important to some.
Okay, so West Conville wastewater community facility monthly update report. This is a monthly update from the West Conville wastewater treatment facility. These are the highlights in your sewer district for previous months. The average daily flow of the month of January was three thousand, three hundred and twelve gallons a day. Generator transfer switch is not working and group power is working on repairing the transfer switch. We received an update from the group power system who informed us that the part has been ordered and will be here in February. Pump station number one has had two pump failures due to grease buildup on the pump. We started to track down where the grease might be coming from in the collection system. We narrowed it down to Bull Hill Road section above house number one twenty-one. We then inspected each step of the tank in the upper Bull Hill Road section. The second tank filters were in place and working. We found some grease from house one twenty-nine and one sixty. The next step is to run sewer camera down similarly so we can be sure that the lateral, where the lateral grease may be coming from. There are pumps that were ordered have been delivered to the facility. LBDV operator Charles Sappel has taken over as chief operator of West Conville Plant. Now we, we are so didn't see. For four, we did sign by town supervisor and submit to the ERC. Like well, generally are scheduled to be on site Wednesday at three o'clock to install water treatment system for the facility of water stuff. To answer a question, you get out.
For those of you who don't know, we have the new operator, not the same company, a lot, but Travis Castle.
When he was in here the other day, he and I were talking. Said that he, he's only seen in the past, in the things they did to experience that actually such a file found that held up. It's just that that was the pump down there.
Really? Okay. They were going out looking for culverts. They're having restaurants or anything like that, or with grease traps or anything like that.
All right, need a motion to accept the sewer district operator report. Bob will make the motion. I'll second this second. All right, Kelly, all those in favor? Any opposed? So carry.
You're on, Bill. This is y'all, so your first. Greetings all. Again, I'd like to thank your manager for encouraging words of the road. I'm gonna make sure it's not a dice, I feel appreciate that. At least one thirteen-hour day that they allow. So my first several weeks, I was with the ten, I've gone as expected. When I jumped on board, there was an issue about what we're gonna put on the road, so on and so forth, the material that I gotten. I mean, not, so far. But we improved existing sand that was here when I took over with the wash beads. It's a, it's a material that cover, that cover provided. It depends, it depends much more not clump. And if you see the clump of sand in the road, after plowing around, plowing and sand that kills, don't affect the whole. And the problem with that is, close up the chute, the operator has to stop. He's got to climb up on the truck, it's a very unsafe situation. Unclump the sand and continue, and it could happen five minutes later again. So we switched to the wash beads and this is Dave's recommendation. And I would encourage the town to do that moving forward. And then, of course, we got sold and the guys that were going, sold the guys that were in five o'clock in the morning of plowing. And I'd also like to recognize Dave Porter, he has literally been at my disposal, coming to be a hand, any questions I had. He says, I'll be right there. Comes to the shop and work, they'll work on stuff. Still getting my hands around the paperwork, but Dave has been very good and very, very helpful. I'd like to recognize that. He's spent a lot of stuff on. I was advised by Jason Wayne, he said, superintendent in room icy condition on our section of the Bates Church Road. Sean and I went down and we looked over it, looks like it's a low spot when they, they plowed the road for us. Remember about doing that? Looks like there was an ice, an ice melt that had retreated. That's gonna require some work, but two more guys, they go back there, unblock that. That up and then one of the room guys actually stopped by the garage and said, we'll break and just let us know that, that's gonna need some work, that's gonna be probably a guardrail and a culvert at the very end of Bates Church Road. And most recently, I was up on Chapel Road over here and the, there's two guardrails there that are mangled and culverts that go along with them. So we're gonna have to get up in there and we're gonna do it all at the same time. Not a breach, we'll cite once and then bring it back. So we're gonna have to get up in there when the weather breaks to fix those to guardrails and culverts.
Thank you very much, Paul. I have to say to myself, if you are, if you're critical of yourself, we all are.
Yeah.
What effects we're doing.
Well, I, I told you I would, I'm not perfect, but I'm my best.
Okay, we have a motion to accept. Motion for Carl. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. I've got something. First thing, it's by the county report, that two things, that one, talk about one, it'll take that long. We've been looking for the last two years to try and sell smaller public safety, otherwise don't care. I threw another second, can't use, even says we can't. Yes, exactly. So, well, we had a couple, we tried to make this economic, so if you give somebody a great deal, give a great amount of people. We had somebody on the boat. Bring a hundred, hundred twenty-five employees instead of a call set. Trying to stack the value, the bargaining negotiations, I hope that the reduction, three cents square foot for every employee they work. Unemployed, you know, it's fun, or the western version, for the regular economy. And I'd say they struggled as long, it's a big barn, they faced this, that, these. The call center is a lot, they couldn't get anybody. So that's the end of that. So anyway, what we've decided to do, it's gonna go out for a bit. Things probably got to life. But if somebody is willing to pay for it, it's necessarily, you know, back. It's also what if they're rich, what if they want to see. It's very down, build something, what are they going to do with it? It's nice and high, it's the way it is in town. It is a nice building, it's not that old. You ever go to places like Vermont, New Hampshire, sometimes you see these old buildings where they convert and then they do like mom stockers, offices, parks, shows, all that kind of stuff. This place had potential, I saw on film, they did this in Saratoga, they sold the building back, the whole bunch of it. This is new, it's got a lot of money, also has. It's four or three levels of jails, uh, cells, but believe it or not, there's, there's places that have actually converted jails into. It's also a twenty thousand square foot registration. So that's going to be done, we're gonna present it to the board on Friday. I don't anticipate, I'm talking to everybody, everybody wants to do what we can. We have to actually, no expect. Hundred percent on, on its own, for, to the left of. Hey, so, so it's costing us. A nice case, sir. Yes, but the funding has been approved to move back to the new jail. Yes. But it's, it's equipment, case of the major flood, so, like we had last night. Yes, so I'm excited about that, we have the, the, a couple of people that are working on it. In Scott County and outside of Scott County. Maybe we'll have somebody identified by mayor, who's usually fine. He tried to feel fancy, he old, he was milling over coal school for seven years. Get high, trying to hide in France, that's back, so finally someone else that's from the nation. It's doors, uh, frames and sashes and all that out of white tie. Groundhouse and some of the air, some lights, it's, have to see the building. How long is that, maybe more interesting. Well, we can get, no, I'm not interested in France, give me a price. And you know what, they turned that into one of the major successes, hundreds of people went to their. Need space, they were, they built for mills or were didn't spread. It's not built for mills at four. Yeah. Exactly, exactly, I mean, you've got a wine company, companies that three hundred employees packing wine. Getting a price, you know? But anyway, that, that, that's, that's a, you'll meet about that in paper probably in the next couple of weeks. Um, but there's something I am kind of passionate about, and I was sharing it with, um, with Rich and, uh, other people that were here for the meeting, is that as we all know, the state is hell bent, I won't say that derogatory, but necessarily, but the state is hell bent on making renewable energy, renewable energy a major part of our total portfolio in state, how we generate electricity. When we talk about things like solar, we're not talking two bucks, we're talking three, four, five hundred acres. Montgomery County's gone into it in a big way. They're off the watch. Yeah, yeah, well, here's the problem though, the state is doing it at the expense of local, as an example, and I, you better, I gave you guys a, a copy of the editorial and an article. You know, it's in the paper, and it tells it better than I can, just to net it out. In, um, Sharon, county of Sharon, there's a huge project by Next Era, who by the way has financing from JP Morgan and other people who don't know anything about. We know energy, they'll just know it's a good way to make a buck, which is fine, just be honest about it, but anyway. Once this place was all built, all the arrays, several hundred acres, they were expecting to collect eight four million dollars in profit tax. And we had it assessed on our all trust, ninety-seven million dollars back, okay? The state is decide, by the way, they don't announce this, they slip it in as part of legislation on, on something totally unrelated, then you find out they passed something making for not deep, I'll say huge discounts on the assessment. So now they're going from two point four million dollars annually to four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars annually. That's money that, that difference is being lost, and this is just one project, there's about a dozen at least going on in town, and there's various statements of discussion. And, you know, we say, wow, that's not gonna hurt us in Combsville, first of all, it's coming with Combsville. We may not be the most desirable, but when the land starts running out in the other, in the big open fields, it's coming, but more immediately, we pay town taxes, obviously, more than we pay, I think, town taxes. Well, guess what, that difference on what would have been between two point four and the two point nine million, which is our share, someone's gotta make that up, guess who? We are, now there's projects. Uh, Scott County, Carlin, Sewer, Middleburg. We can't beat it, I mean, and I know so sure we wanna beat it, but very at least, keep in mind, there is no infrastructure for everybody to plug their cars in downstate, and this is a alternative benefit of downstate at the expense of upstate. And if you expend their numbers, if they, the amount of arrays or renewable energy, you could be talking between a quarter of a million and a half million acres of this, so we're gonna be one vast renewable energy parking lot from about Vermont border all the way out to West Union York State. They don't have, by the way, they can't get the energy down there, so now they're building a massive, I do mean massive uh, power line somewhere in Delaware County, down to somewhere in the New York City area. And it's all gonna be buried, okay, that's all good, imagine all the fuss everybody made and the state did too, when they wanted to do, uh, natural gas, remember they all complained about, okay, but no, but it's no, but you.
They're making for the left.
Yeah, meanwhile, it's all gonna be right away, and the domain, all that, that was no good for the natural gas, but it's perfectly good to do it for that. I mean, it is safer, I know that, plus they're, they're going to be bringing in, I forget how many gigawatts it is, but they're gonna be bringing in major power from Canada, Hydro Quebec. And they're going to bury that cable in Lake Champlain, and they hook it up somewhere down the line with all this stuff. I mean, the money is spectacular that they're putting into it, but again, it's costing us. Big, big time. I, I just sort of liken it to the way I've said this to a couple of people, they're treating upstate, meaning all, I don't care the Republicans, that's got nothing to do with it, they're just treating us like that. The way the British treated the colonies, they took, they, they ignored us. They sucked us dry, it's gonna get worse and worse, we have a major economic development. So, property tax is good, well, we make a difference, we're trying to get people to come here because the taxes are good. Well, they're not gonna be good that long, it's all at our expense. So, that's enough, I'm passionate about it. I wanna keep you awake, now it's, Harry's very low, because that, yeah, I gave you that, um, three page resolution. No, I gave it to you this morning. What's that? No, it's not on the agenda, but it's part of this discussion. Looks like it. Alright, if it's a lot, you can ask somebody to switch off and read it, but, but it's, it's important and, uh, just a thirty second intro. What this is all about is the county is working with other counties now. Stick with Delaware, we found, we're trying to work with, but if we're going to, at least, we can't resist it, at least get a fair share of that, we need to work together, school districts, villages, towns and the county, so this is a, um, a request for the, in our case, for the town to opt in as part of this consortium group that's gonna, and by the way, there's a lot of legal fees involved. Lot of legal fees, and by the way, don't research developers, make us look like there's been, in terms of what we can get. But, um, why, could you read it and then maybe chat that more, or maybe just get a quick motion?
Canary County Renewable Industrial Wind Energy Project Free Application and Higher Upper Speed Schedule. Whereas numerous renewable energy industrial wind energy companies have at least a speculative desire to site renewable energy industrial energy projects in municipalities throughout Canary County. And whereas the majority of this citing and regulatory burden is placed on the town and village, both communities in which they are located, as the town or village host community is the lead agency and overseer of the comprehensive plan and land use, land use code. Whereas municipalities and school districts throughout Canary County intend to be cooperative with renewable industrial wind energy companies in effort to support the renewable energy goal of the government, with desire of fair and equitable uniformity. Whereas much time, energy administration and taxpayer dollars are necessary to accommodate renewable energy industrial wind energy companies. While in some cases the project does not proceed past a speculative stage of the rate season. Whereas this topic has placed yet another demand and burden on the loaded resources of local municipalities with essentially direct to unfunded mandate imposed by the state. And whereas an unreasonable heavy burden is placed upon local town supervisors, mayors, clerks, code enforcement officers, council and county planning employees who are uncompensated for the traditional workload that stresses the limit, stresses the limited administrative capabilities. And whereas the towns, villages receive no compensation should any speculative project not result in destruction and operation. And whereas the Canary County Board of Supervisors agreed to pass an optional opt-out resolution in an effort to assist municipalities create fair, equitable, consistent taxing agreements throughout the county. And whereas this resolution sets a fee schedule for municipalities to realize in order to enroll consistently in compensation for their time, efforts and related expenses. And whereas a free application fee of ten thousand per rated megawatt project and the megawatt capacity. Project capability will be required by renewable energy industrial wind energy companies payable to the host town or village at a minimum at twenty-five thousand per rated project. Um, megawatt applicable to project with rated capacities of less than two point five million watt. And whereas a maximum pre-application fee of a hundred and fifty thousand will be required payable to the host town or village for projects with rated capacities greater than fifteen million watt capacity. And whereas the pre-application fee is held by the town or village host community, and whereas the pre-application fee is, fees are seventy-five percent refundable, continuing upon to Canary County's school districts and town villages' project approval. In addition to an accepted pilot in, in lieu of taxes, the agreement with twenty-five percent pre-application fee is contained by the town. Whereas if any project is not approved by Canary County School District, it's not going to be in one year but being official offer, including an accepted pilot agreement. The pre-application fee shall be non-refundable unless otherwise agreed upon by the party, including the town and school major. Town or village. The pre-application fee will be distributed with seventy-five percent being the same by the town village and twenty-five being allocated to the town. And whereas the official inquiries to find a first contact including introductory meetings with project host community, which are by renewable energy developer, requires an official host community wherein response within time. And whereas no renewable industrial wind energy or other energy project planning, including site survey, public hearing, etc. will be undertaken until pre-application, the pre-application fee is paid in full by the developer owner. And whereas in addition, a pilot agreement will be negotiated and through the park, to many school districts, towns and villages that are applicable, subject to a minimum of twenty thousand dollars per megawatt or full value to that station, and involve two and distributed between Canary County School District, Town and Village work. Whereas this fee schedule does not include application fees required by code enforcement officer, nor the inclusion of any accepted decommissioning frame, which shall be distinct and separate from the application fee and pilot agreement. With all that, the town of Combsville opting to the new agreement, which means the every county's school districts, towns, villages, government and town clerk indirectly is ready to provide a copy of this resolution to the board of supervisors and a copy of this regulation.
Thank you, that was good. Does anybody wanna hear it again? No, but the gist of it is that we've had a couple of times where these outfits come in, we have one over here, it's a, it's supposedly a removal, you have the cabinet, you know. But it's very similar, they come in, they, they have loads of work that they, they dump on the, uh, the local municipality. I need this, I need surveys, I need information, but, and they work with it. So I'll say this isn't that great a deal, I mean, we put a lot of time and effort into this. So they already started doing that in certain towns, and I, I know too that they gladly put up seventy-five thousand dollars just to start the conversation. So that, you know, in other words, you get the bottom fees out of it, the ones that are actually serious, because you're wasting your time on, it's like selling cars, you, you know the person, you'd wanna go out with a lot with, no one that's just looking. But that, that, that's, and by the way, we've had one, another one, so, you know, we've changed our mind, we want our money back, we have to find that. So what we're trying to do is, we can't make them go away, and I'm not so sure we wanna make all of them go away, but some places do. But at the very least, we should try to get as much, or recoup as much as we can, and that comes with things like code enforcement officers' fees. If someone's gonna put up a two hundred acre solar array, we're not looking for a fifty dollar building from right here. We're looking for something like maybe in six phases, and that's perfectly, that's, that's the way you do it, and, and we have to. I mean, at least get something to recoup our losses, so does anybody have any comments about? This, this is, this is gonna be big news, and it already is in some circles, but this is gonna be more and more the focus of, uh, conversation and attention in our town, and in our towns. Absolutely, I mean, you can, you can opt out of it too if we want, at a later date, and why would we want to? We, this is no downside, no. Okay, I have a motion. Would you like that to be a motion? Yes, I would, okay. Yes, there has to be a local, but he made a motion.
Ralph Eaton?
Aye.
What's that?
Aye.
Hi. Howard Drummond?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye. Thank you.
Bill, is every other, are other towns making similar resolutions?
Yeah, this is the.
Is it everyone?
I just inserted, it's just insert main town, so it's the same thing, like, yeah, definitely. We have a guy over in, uh, supervisor in the town of Len that I appointed chairman of the energy committee. No, I can't be that, that, it's almost a full-time job.
Yeah.
It is huge. Alright, town business. The November and December financial report you have, it was sent to you on the separate cover and also as part of the, uh, the agenda. Comments, questions? How much motion acceptable? Okay, can we make the motion? Secondes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, okay. Next thing is something called short-term rental regulations. What that is, is in other words, like directors being, things like that. And they're popping up in a lot of places, more than, more than some than others, but there's a number of them here, you know. And they're popping up in a lot of places, more than, more than some than others. There's a number of them here we don't even know about. Jefferson and Rich could speak to this, an amazing number that they weren't aware that they even had. And there's exposure to the towns. In that they, they are renters. I don't mean by police living there. It's under thirty days. Those businesses, and that's what they are, are subject to certain regulations for lodging. And if the town, correct me if I say anything wrong, meaning if the town knows they're doing that and doesn't regulate that with an annual fire inspection, safety inspection. I guess by if you have to, you 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 would have some culpability for something going south. So I have a, they passed a local law in Jefferson. I mean, that's, that's a little bit more intense because they have a lot more over there. But I, in the next month or two, I'd like to talk to you both about doing something along those lines with the factors. I mean, you have people staying in there. And this is just on a very high one. There's a lot of different things on. You had some, you're renting a house out for somebody. There are certain things that we need to do as a, like, you know, when you work for that work on the bottom. Lynn, I don't even know what you're talking about.
Oh, that's all.
Yeah.
It's a host.
A host. All right, that's, yeah. No, anyway, I just, that's just to tell you what's coming down the line. We could ignore it, but I don't think that's why I said. EEP resolution request, that's what we just read. So maybe we not only just, we could skip all of that. Well, actually, it's a different fee because I apologize. But this one's a lot shorter. Yeah.
Resolution of earning property owner requests to EEP to place no hunting footage five hundred feet from property line. Whereas the residence and property of Harry La at three nine six Spalding Road in the town of Conville, the Harry County Sheriff's Community Property Line is the United State Department of Land Management. Whereas this is concerned with hunting on that portion of EEP where there is a hundred feet of their shared property line. Whereas the EEP has stated they would honor this request to keep a posted suspension of the at points five hundred from the shared property line. Whereas the EEP has requested we can send a proposal to the town which allows the press to post no hunting in those and by the way, this property line. Therefore, we have resolved the Conville town doctor's burden that concerns the EEP most no hunting crime that five hundred people is missing from the shared property line.
I got a call from tiras that we should. EEP was really good about it, but they don't make a move back to town. That gets on that. So tell them some of their all four, so on. Yeah. So it's already been introduced. We need a second. I'll sorry, we have a second from Bob.
Ralph Banter?
Aye.
Robert Reed?
Aye.
Ty, anything, Howard Roman?
Aye.
Doug Smith?
Aye. Thanks. Um, all right, these, the next two sort of go together. Weird combination. CEO interviews, head, and audit update on. There's a reason for that. We appointed Rich, which is doing a fantastic job, but we did say we would entertain other athletes that want, right? Yeah, okay. I think we should do the interview. We're very happy with the documents, but we need to do the two interviews, as we said. Also need to do a special meeting to update documents just got, I think it was off by. Have time to go, can't. Pat waiting, pet food, waiting, send after he gets approved from the patent. So what I'm proposing is to convert one song soon. I could do the interview. So I'm recommending February twenty-fourth, still have the votes, paper, all that. Still gets, it's got to be the state by the end. He'll take care of that. Yeah. Is that date good for everybody? Uh, the day, the third. One more right now. Okay, so we can do that on that page. But we have that three feet more than on the floor. Um, okay, the next thing, J cap, seven, yeah, seven o'clock. J cap grant. J C is Justice Court, I know the A P. But, but, but it is the that's certain G by former the grant state where they have this funding, something should be, which is a lot, which should be either to buy for improvements to the court, which is also physical. So we got about sixteen thousand dollars. Prove it's, one of them is the heaters. The split system, and we talked about that. They're only going to give us half. So it's eighteen thousand dollars. Yeah, yeah. But this thing here, it's been here at least fifteen years. Not bad. Going back, we're saying they're going to be outlawing fuel. Burn, new fuel burning units in the next five, ten years. Yeah. Yeah. But anyway, I think it's a good thing to have a, at A C. A C country will go down. But it also will have another improvement, like replacements for, or probably hot places. Good surface side, I don't even know, something like that. That's about three thousand dollars. Some furniture replacements, some, some judges. And new cipher board lines. That would be a big ticket. Not only five dollars, geez, before. Something that we, the court. Paperwork. That's just, I don't, I don't even ask if you accept it or not. We will get a check for transfer about the April. We have another day to take. It will be some breakage for this role compared to. For instance, if we have meetings. All right, that's, that's a point of information. Thank you, Jane. You're getting that. Chief, that's a job cleaning up the hall. This one here, my favorite, I mentioned this at the last board meeting. And I'm going to have to give you a little history of what's happened since then. People be going back up to old point in terms of, of what's going on. You have somebody, uh, bought short its, uh, business on short in the past. Start speculating. But it is still a problem. Keep good people. We lighted that. Established a two thousand dollars retention bonus last year, starting December first. And if you're still with us, November, you can get a thousand dollars. So get it before Christmas. Still, it's very difficult to get good people. So I mentioned in the polls, I think I'd say that this, this, but I, all of this. I mentioned that I took a look at a couple of things. First of all, we have four full divers. That's the equivalent of about a five and a half full back quarters. That is the third most employee resource in the county, but second smallest county. Step that up. But I, I, I am proposing against that, but we pay out to the budget for. Who's that, four full divers? Yes, but they haven't been away for now. Phil, they never got away from that.
Well, they had them in the winter too, brought away.
Well, these, these guys are working twenty-nine hours for the most part, with some exceptions. My point being is, oh, by the way, we don't need to do county roads. We don't cut the grass at the parking lot, the cemetery. We don't, I mean, it's kind of bizarre that we have that many people. When you have only Cole's Hill mostly does the village, that's six or seven people, then you have the whole, which are outliers. You can't go by them. But the other towns bigger than us have less people on the highway. But when I was posing power, is that we look at the, what we're spending. Four people. I'm not putting on a suit like that, but we use that money to increase the retention bonus by two thousand and ten thousand dollars, which is really a good thing. I spoke to the business agent, the team's, your guys must be doing car rentals. Says there are plenty of big trucking companies not doing as good, just as good as. But and I, I want them to have that money, but I don't, the whole point of this is to keep them here. We give them that kind of raise, which by the way, is outside of the contract, and they argue. Right? So for an increase, according to the union website, they got a sixteen percent overall increase. Now that some got more, some got less, but that's the number that the union, that's a pretty nice increase. And I, I'm more than willing to spend the money. I just don't want to commit. My decision alone. I don't want to commit more than here. They're saying the economy might change. I'm not so sure about that, but I'm, I'm not smart enough to figure it out myself. But a lot of places are starting to do this to keep their good people. If we did this, their effective rate of pay will fall almost five dollars an hour. They're just being paid later here. That hurts them. I need the money now. But you know what? You're, you're not the lowest paid person in this job. There are other places that are lower than you are. And I, I always believe that a person works for what I mean by that is you sell your labor or your skills to the highest bidder. There's others that factor sometimes, a lot of the folks at home or whatever. So, so I, I, to bring us up to about twenty-one, twenty-two dollars an hour, it'd probably be five bucks, almost five bucks. On face of ten thousand dollars. That's pretty damn good. I think it's excellent. And I, 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 I want to, it looks like we're shaping up to have a good deal. I don't want to lose those guys. Matter of fact, one guy that's coming back left us. And he's coming back because it wasn't as rosy as he thought it was where he came from. I think there's other.
Oh, you keep a bunch of shelter chairs and all, I don't know.
Oh, yeah. Could be. Yeah, I wouldn't doubt it. So when I, when we talk about the, the last thing, when we talk about the part times. We still need, we will be shorthanded sometimes with between whole roster. They're available. That was always the purpose, to fill in the gaps. But it's, it's morphed into a full-time, not full-time, part-time. In other words, they're there. They're expected to be there. Weird how we, it just that's it. We, we have, we're not doing the county roads in the winter. I'm glad we're not. So I think this is, I mean, it's not like we're trying to hurt them. We're actually trying to help them. I know I heard somebody say I need the money now. Well, I can't help that. This is the contract that you signed, that you thought was a good deal.
How does that change you over a couple of months?
Yeah.
This contract that I signed, you just signed it less than a year ago. They're two years down.
Yes. And they're getting a two percent raise March first.
Right. And then again, another two percent. All right, we can just close book on it, say you're getting what you're getting, or, you know, that's that.
Yeah.
Offering them ten thousand dollars for staying around for a year. Which is the worst.
They can go near drop, drive and talk anywhere they go, get that. And when I go, they'll have them, they'll have their pay. And how come they don't? I don't know. That must be their choice. Okay. Because that's their, you know, it's their choice, but this is. What's that? Oh, I agree with it. And I imagine two years from now when the contract's up and there's a negotiation, we're not going to be dealing with two percent. I agree with that. I know that. But the, the union itself thinks this is a really square deal. I mean, essential.
Let them take a line and share all the health insurance.
Yep.
We have a liberal shift on policy. Sure. I see what you mean, much more than that. We change, I could offer them the same health policy that I have. I pay two hundred and sixty-five dollars a week. We tell them that's the health insurance company now, instead of the town paying for all that. What town pays for health insurance is equivalent to about six bucks an hour.
Now, I did some back of the envelope calculating over the weekend. And I didn't bring it in because it is true back of the envelope. You get the idea. Order a magnet. You figure all the other things that we pay, the banks, the stuff that also we're required to pay, disability, all that. You're pushing on average, almost thirty dollars an hour. And I'm not saying that's wrong, that we can't, we shouldn't do that. We're required to do a lot of it. The retirement plans, etc. So I, I mean, if we don't want to do the ten thousand, okay, we won't do it. But I, I for one won't support any raise now. So we negotiate that in good faith.
And that's not something we can negotiate with them anymore.
No, no, that's another thing that you, they need to go, it says, they need to go to the union. They, they don't want, the union will do it. They're embarrassed. Right. But the, the point being is that it says on the first page of the contract, you Teamsters two ninety-four is the sole bargaining aid for these employees. So not that, you know, I like everyone, but I'm just kind of a conversation. Or your business agent, but by the way, the business taking quote, these guys should be doing cartwheels. And these got people that make less than our people. Last I looked, the county Carroll makes about a buck and a half an hour less than us. The county makes about two dollars less than us. Now, I'm not saying that's good. It isn't, but we're working our way towards increasing salaries. One person makes, who makes almost nineteen dollars an hour. I think any of these are, he's been there a long time. So I, I think but we, the, the thing that we can compete against the private sector. No, we can't. So I mean, that's the, that's the proposal. Anybody have any other comments? I was about to say. Well, I will make the motion that we do what I do. Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Than an extension or opposed? Is that an extension or opposed? What? An extension, okay. Well, you can make it a bold vote and be offended either. Well, you can make it a poll, and we can either. I, I think this is a good deal, I really do, somebody offered me ten thousand dollars to stick around. I'd stick around, particularly if I got closer to that November thirtieth day, and that's the whole point, this is, this is a retention, it's, we're giving them something something else in return, you're gonna stay here. Because I thought I went over to any other town, they, they dance, look down. Patiently waited. We have a, we have a vacancy in our, with our town store, and that opened up about, I don't know, four weeks ago, something like that. And we had somebody that has expressed an interest in the past, and I think she would be very passionate, we talked amongst ourselves individually, so we don't have any open meeting laws, but we all agreed on this, that, um, Kim Young, who's with us tonight, would be an excellent person to take over as our town store. And, uh, you wanna say anything, Kim?
I thank you very much, I, I appreciate it, and I'm looking forward to it, it's only been a few days since I talked with Bill, so I have to do a little bit more talking and kind of figuring out where things are at, but I'm really excited, I teach social studies history every single day, um, so it's something I'm really interested in, um, and I'm looking forward to it, I've been connected to the council community my entire life, so.
I think you're gonna bring a lot of benefits to it, I don't wanna put you off the spot. I've already seen that, if you look at it. So, I appreciate you wanting to do it, and unless there's any further discussion, let's make a motion to make it happen. I'll second, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? It's okay. I'm out. Okay. Anybody on the board have anything they wanna bring up, talk about? No? Okay. Well. Okay. In that case, can all should we redo the invoices? Oh, we do have one thing. The judge's annual report. Notice I do that over here. It is. Here it is. We have to do this once a year. The judge's annual report, approve it, it's not, that just came up today, so, that's why it's not, otherwise, it would have been, I sent it out, but there always will be changes to the agenda. They're not gonna push me out. You want to continue this here? No? Well, I want to say one other thing, she, the sheriff's nephew here, it's not at the request of the town of Combsville. I don't know if you do that.
Oh, I'm, I don't know, it's my Friday, so. This is the most action I'm gonna see, so be it.
It's gonna be a great night, that's it.
Those people are running holes in each other, I don't care. We'll punch each other. My only, please, go right ahead, take this.
Nobody's out there, fly.
Take it, take it until one AM, I don't care.
No, no, no. You'll be the only one here by Friday.
For twelve thirty, so I can get back to the office at one.
No, we can do Chinese paintings. Yeah. I'm making a motion, we do the invoices. Okay, we have a motion that we redo the invoices, I'll second it, all those in favor? This is where the whole stretch here, let me just say, this is my first pass at doing a Zoom call. I'm sure there's some input that we'll get from some people, will be done better, and we'll take that to heart, because, uh, looks like that'll be a regular thing, a good thing. No, no. Just like. So, um, taking the clothes and we'll prove it as opposed. A lot of work to make that out, I don't wanna mess up. This is okay, my wife is texting my wife, you see us in here, she said, yeah, Jeff lately says he's, but. So.
Oh, sleep, that's pretty cool. What is the river movie making?
On camera? So I will entertain a motion to adjourn if there's no other business. So moved. Yep. All of us, if they can say aye, aye, any opposed? Carrie, thank you for all you folks that have tuned in and.